6:40, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. On the agenda, we have public hearing, 6:35 for a site plan review. Number 19 SPR-03 for 3:30, Plymouth Street, O'Reilly's. At 7:00 PM, we have a Form A for 3:95, Plymouth Street. Redistribution of lot lines. We have discussion of mutual bank drainage. There's seven minutes and bills. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda address?
Motion to accept the agenda address?
Can I say it?
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to suspend the regular scheduled planning board and open the public hearing for site plan review, 19 SPR-03 at 3:30, Plymouth Street.
Your motion is your second?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open.
Good evening, nice to see you guys again. So just to follow up from our last meeting, there were several comments that the review engineer, the review engineer had that I have recently satisfied. And I have to, I believe, Terry, I don't know if you distributed the email or not?
I did.
The link?
But I didn't get any hard copies.
I have a fifth one, Terry, as well, but I'm gonna just hold on to it for a sec.
Sure.
Okay. So if you don't mind, I'd just like to go through them. We're gonna go through them. First one, the drainage calculations indicate the post-development overall off-site rate of runoff will not exceed overall off-site pre-development rate of runoff for all storm events, up to and including the 100-year storm event. However, under existing conditions, all runoff is directed away from Plymouth Street. And under the proposed condition, runoff subcatchment PDA-2 will be directed to Plymouth Street, thereby increasing the runoff to Plymouth Street. We discussed the situation with Mr. Steve Haywood, Hyrum Surveyor, and he advised that there are existing flooding concerns in Plymouth Street in front of this property, and no additional runoff should be allowed to flow onto Plymouth Street. The plan should be revised so that the runoff onto Plymouth Street is eliminated. So I spoke, so what he's talking about, there is a, the driveway comes up pretty fast. We have to satisfy certain conditions, and we want it to be higher than the road. So it comes up pretty fast. So what happens is, this portion of the driveway is bombing into the street. Which is fine, because overall, we satisfied the peak discharge rate. But because of this ongoing issue with the drainage in the street, they wanted us to do something. So the review engineer suggested that we put a leak-off here. So this elevation in the street right now, when we go to the grade and drainage part, you know, this is obviously in very severe situations.
If you mind moving that back a little bit, go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
It's easier to see.
Yeah. So currently, we have a grade of 71 in the road. We have a catch basin is, I think it's like 70.9 something at the base of the drive. So we super elevated the majority of our driveway so that it goes into a leak-off here. And then we removed the front sidewalk that was connecting the existing sidewalk to our parking lot. And we provided a swale that goes around and down into where the wetlands is here. Again, so that will collect a portion of the driveway, and then it'll, the swale is actually shallow enough to allow for some recharge, and then eventually, with the highest storm events, it'll go around to the, to the back, to where the wetlands is now.
So is that, would you require a, you proposing grade changes outside of the property in order to create that swale?
On the side, no. This is our property line, we're tying into the grades of the property line.
Okay.
So that was comment one, and that was our solution for, for the small portion that was actually draining into the highway. Comment two, the groundwater recharge section of the engineering report states that with such poor site infiltration properties, groundwater recharge is not assessed as part of the site design. However, because of the proposed site stones is within 100 foot of the buffer of the bordering designated wetlands, groundwater recharge is required by Massachusetts. So to satisfy this comment, I increased the bottom of the basin slightly, and was able to get the volume, and we raised the low orifice here, and I was able to get the volume for the recharge volume required by the Massachusetts standards. So the basin from the last design is a little bit bigger, and the outlet control structure did get remodified.
Are you guys meeting the two-foot separation?
Yeah, there's actually a little over three in that area, from where we are at the bottom of the basin, from our bores that we do.
So you're elevating the site how much, this area?
Um, with a building.
Oh, let's say the back of the building.
Uh, the back of the building is around 72, and that is a 67 in that area. So it's almost like five feet high.
Okay. Do you remember what the recharge rate was for what you guys were assuming for?
We did nearly .52.
Hold on.
Let me look it up real quick. I believe it was .52.
I can look it up.
Sounds not right.
So number three, the cover of the proposed discharge pipe from the catch basin is only about a foot between the thickness of the frame and the top of the side of the catch basin. It may not be possible to construct this structure with limited cover. If it is possible, we recommend the pipe be either Class 5 reinforced concrete or ducted iron. So we, we were able to lower the pipe slightly and get the cover, and we changed accordingly to the Class 5 RCP.
Casey, talk a little slower.
Oh. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, next one. Number four, the sump in the catch basin should be a minimum of four feet. This should be specified on the detail on sheet 3.02. So we modified the detail to have a four-foot sump. Number five, the discharge end of the proposed rerouted drain line from Plymouth Street is shown to discharge into a level separator below grade. In order to prevent surcharge in the line and to allow for easier maintenance, we recommend at the end of the pipe discharge or at or above grade. The riprap sump could be constructed at the end of the line to form in a similar manner to the level spreader. So this is where I, when I spoke to the review engineer, I said, listen, we can, we can raise it up, and I think the commission will be okay with raising it up, because we did talk about how this pipe right now for the Hyrum Department is actually more of a distribution, it's distributing at same elevation as their main line. So what I propose is to have it not be in a surcharge, surcharge condition, and be able to free, flow freely, cover the pipe a little more, and then go at, I believe I did a half a percent, and then it ended up being, the invert here ended up being above, like right at the same elevation as the crown and the main line. So now this flow will only catch higher, right, higher flow. And if that ever happens to back up, because they said when they blocked this, that it has problems in the road, obviously, this is better than a blocked condition. But if it ever does, ever have another issue where the road starts flooding up again for any reason, this leak-off should take some of that burden from the road so it wouldn't, it won't be, the water won't go across the lane as he's mentioned has done in the past. So there's kind of two overflow, high storm event measures that were, will be put in place here to, to help it, not remove it completely, because I think then you're just gonna have, you might always have flooding here and then a constant river if need be. But to have it above the crown, at least the two-year storm events, and possibly even 10-year, again, I didn't run the whole system, that's all, that would take a good six months. But it will alleviate some of the higher flow, the higher storm events, and should just flow directly where it's supposed to, to the river down by the, on Common Farms. Or is it Common Farms in the riverhead?
No.
The golf, uh, what's that?
Like fire station?
Fire station, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that was number five. Number six, in order to adequately convey the design stone, the catch basin in a hydrodynamic separator should be equipped with a double grate. So I talked with him, and he actually just wants the one out here, this catch basin here to be a double catch basin. So we had no problem converting that to a double catch basin. Number seven, the long-term inspection and maintenance manual, including the engineering portion, outline inspection and maintenance procedures for the catch basin. I updated that, and that's in the engineering port in front of you guys, because I think it's Appendix G or something. Number eight, the spill containment section of the long-term inspection and maintenance manual references porous pavement. That was, how bad? Must've been a copy of it, we deleted that. There is no porous pavement on site. The soil erosion self-control plan, Sheet 2.31, should specify a silksack inlet protection for the hydrodynamic separator. We provided that. Number 10, the soil erosion self-control control plan, Sheet 2.31, shows area protection fence to protect a proposed leaching area at the front portion of the property. There does not appear to be any proposed leaching area in this location. We originally did add the septic designed in front, but the soils weren't adequate for that, so we had the testing down here, and the soils were adequate there, and I just forgot to move the fence over. Number 11, the proposed sidewalk on the right side of the building is shown to be two and a half feet wide. He's referring to, it's not actually a sidewalk, it's just, this was actually, it shouldn't have been concrete, it's regular asphalt. And this line right here is just striping, and they propose curb stops.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so two and a half feet is enough for an overhang that it won't hit the building. That's, that's the right, it's minimum on that. So he understood that it wasn't a sidewalk, and there would be no pedestrians going through that area. Number 12, the driveway and parking area is surrounded by either vituuminous concrete curbing on the left side in front of the building. We questioned the reason for this. There was a flush condition here, and honestly, it was because it was a high point of, of the drainage, and so I didn't think curbing was necessary, but you know, you never know after years that that area might erode for any reason, cars might, you know, drive up close to it. So I just put curbing there and call it a day.
As a Cape Cod brown?
No, just, we just regular vituuminous concrete, asphalt curbing. Number 13, areas for snow stories should be identified on the plan. We put an area around this area, I mean, it could be over here too, if, if you want. Number 14, we understand that the septic design will be reviewed by the Board of Health, however, we note that the required design flow under Title V is 362 gallons per day, which is about three times the proposed design flow of 120 gallons per day. We are going, I am submitting to the Health Department tomorrow, actually. We had a, I was working out the design for the pump, took a little longer than I expected. Not because it was hard, it's very busy. So I will be submitting to the Health Department tomorrow. They have, they said potentially on the docket for maybe April, if they can't do the beginning, the first week of April, it'll be the third beginning of April, for Tuesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday? It might be Wednesday.
They're on Wednesdays.
Yes. So we will be going through the process with them and figuring out. We're going for a couple of variances, that is one of them. O'Reilly's, for the Health Department, O'Reilly's only really has a 60 gallons per day flow. It's like less than like a single-family house. And I don't know if you've ever been to O'Reilly's or an AutoZone, the bathrooms aren't really that accessible, so when you go in, you're not, a lot of people just don't use the bathroom, so they always have a generally low average gallons per day usage. And there's about three to five employees on the peak hour, and probably five to seven people in there at the peak hour, so it's a very low flow. And so we are requesting variance to the Health Department to use their meter reading as their gallons per day, which you can do in the Title V, you just have to request variance for the, the Health Authority.
Have you gotten any feedback from Board of Health yet?
No, we haven't, we have not submitted yet, so that'll be tomorrow.
Yeah, I've never heard anyone pulling that out.
No. I mean, to three, three times the size, it's like, first of all, this billing is 7,225 square feet, and the Title V requires you to do per the square footage of billing. 3,000 of this is the sales area. The rest is storage and, and the like, you know, they keep their product in the back. So 7,000, they've never reached 320 something gallons per day in any store.
That's, anyway, that's.
Yeah, we, yeah, right, they, they, right. So yeah, well, we're, we're gonna be in that process soon. So yeah, that's, those are the comments from, now, I don't know if you wanna kind of bring it up to speed on, on what we did today. We went out to the site, and we looked at the neighboring property of the bank, and we looked at their outlet control structure. It appears that it was designed per plan. The problem is, it doesn't really have an outlet at the property line of the neighbors, so it does flood, it comes up over, and finds its own path to, to the low, the low side. Now, I don't know if you've ever seen that flood happen as far as our property, submerged property here. But I, I strongly believe that our plan will be a better condition than existing now, both recharge and peak discharge.
Just curious, how did you guys feel after walking in and seeing the plan? Does it seem like it won't have an impact on your property, or do you think it would improve the conditions based off of what you were able to see?
Well, if he can get the pipe, or put in a pipe going from that back corner, the north side of the property, maybe out to the back ditch or something to get the water away if it, when it overflows, or we gotta do something with the town's water. The town's water is the big concern right now.
I don't think it will be able to, right, because it's not their property once, once they get out.
Well, they have to get, they're gonna have to give them a right of way, if that's what, right?
Well, I did notice out there, this is, this is definitely a ditch in this location right here. We are, we are dumping, or discharging into this corner, so most likely, this low-lining area will, that ditch will collect a lot of water. I don't foresee, I mean, I looked at this, this area here, and it did kind of rise up a little, so I don't foresee it going into the bank and adding, contributing to the bank's already issue in the, in the back there.
Right.
So I, I strongly believe that it will go into this ditch, and will go into the ditch that, you know, takes the turn in your property and then goes.
It should go, if anything, should be some, some sort, because there is gonna be a neighbor there, there's gonna be another, another neighbor. There has to be either a pipe or something putting it in the back ditch to get it out of that area, because it's coming down, it's gonna come down. If you put it there, it's just gonna come right down through.
So who owns that property back there?
John.
So that would be his responsibility to extend that ditch potentially to tie into the outfall?
Well, yeah, either the ditch, or, that ditch was dug for to drain that area, for one thing. That ditch is, both ditches came right straight down.
Yeah. So I think they're gonna be limited to discharge it right at that corner, it can't go off their property, so it would be his responsibility to tie into that. So once it's done, just to make sure that it.
Well, he wants the wetlands, but, you know.
Now, if, if that goes through, if this is accepted the way it is, is there any recourse we have if it doesn't work?
Recourse and what?
Where do we go? Because that's the problem we had with the bank.
Because how would you know if it doesn't work?
Well, if we get flooded in that back land.
Right, but the, would you, would you, oh, in the backland here, yeah, not where, not where your, the flooding is consistent now.
In that back, in that back ditch, it's open.
Yeah.
It's open.
Right.
So if we have more water that's gonna come back down towards our house, if we have the flooding, if, and the board accepts your plan, what I'm asking is, is there anybody that can help us after this goes through and approved? Because that's the problem we have with the bank.
I think a lot of that really does all depend. Like, we're gonna do our best to make sure that this design looks like it will work, but if there's some unnatural, some natural disaster that's well above and beyond, that's, that's the tricky part, is because if we have some storm like we've never seen in the next 20 years, potentially it fails, I don't see how that could necessarily be on them. If it's a naturally occurring storm, if what they do fails, if an embankment drops, something like that, they will definitely be responsible for it.
Right.
But as far as the flooding, I'm not sure that we could point the finger at them.
So if anything did happen to the detention pond, anything that would, you know, anything at all, it's not, then it doesn't, it doesn't go per Massachusetts stormwater code anymore. And that's where you'd have to come back, and you'd definitely have to reconstruct and do, do whatever you need to do.
Are you shutting the water off from the town?
We are raising it up, so currently our design is raising the pipe up so not, for smaller storm events, it won't, it won't go in. It would have to surcharge the main pipe, then go up into it.
Yeah, are you gonna give them, are they giving them easement to go and pump, break directly right out of there?
We, I mean, it doesn't have an easement now, I'm not sure how that works.
You'll have to give them an easement.
Right, we'll have to give a, and.
Well, they have to give them an easement.
Well, the town wouldn't be allowed to drain through your property with that.
Right, exactly. Without an easement.
I think, I think what we need to do is, we need to take a look at what the, what the town is doing right now, and see what's on the plans before we really comment on.
But on the plans, it conveys.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the town's plans.
Regardless, on these plans, it shows a pipe coming through, so.
Yeah, if he's gonna do that, he's gonna have to bring an easement, I agree with you there.
Yeah.
So if you get rid of the town water, and you're responsible for your water, that's probably fine. It probably should work.
Because the thing.
Yeah, right.
What they're designing will take all of the.
It should work.
Water from their property, I believe.
Right, that's true.
The thing we don't know is how much water's gonna come from the.
So now, what's gonna happen is now, is it's gonna back up on the road, and it's gonna go down their drain, the bank's drain, which it's doing also.
Well, we need to investigate to see where that runoff is that he's got in the front here, what that is gonna do out on the road. We can have some grades taken out there and figure out if it's, if the bank, the catch basin for the bank gets impeded by the same water, or they're gonna catch it.
Where is all the drainage coming from Happy Gods or All Seasons over that way? Because that, all that comes down.
Probably comes into the street into these catch basins.
Right.
And these catch basins are supposed to go to the west.
To the. But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna pick, we're gonna get the plans that the town has down to the Highway Department. Take a look at them and see where that stuff's going.
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you this, they are 12-inch pipes. The area that's going to these, to the road, I mean, I think they were probably undersized from the beginning, to be honest. 12-inch pipe is nothing.
But this part of the road was rebuilt probably 15 years ago.
Right, and the rebuilt pipe is still a 12-inch drainage.
From the catch basin.
Catch basin is correct.
Along to the manholes.
Right, so.
Resizes the main after it ties into the manhole there.
So there's a, I'm not actually, oh, 12.
It'd be typical to run it from the catch basin, 12 inches for me.
Oh, maybe it isn't 12. Yeah, the 12 to the.
The 14. So goes to the catch basin and the front. That's to this side, those 14 and that.
Okay, so yeah, that's 12 into 12, yeah. So yeah, this, this along the front is a 12-inch, 12-inch pipe.
A 14's a weird size.
Yeah, that is a weird size. You said it was done 15 years ago?
Wow. Probably.
Somewhat years ago.
Yeah, so this is lower, this is higher, and that's higher, so it is definitely flowing now.
20 years, I think, from 1998.
And the road's done before that.
The bank was 98.
And 106 was before that?
Was it?
Was it?
I mean, I don't remember.
Maybe around that time, but I don't know. We're gonna pull the plans and, and see where that goes.
Can I ask you a somewhat related question? How did you come up with the infiltration rate for the?
Oh, it's, it's based on soil type. So we have a, we have a certain soil type here, and, and yeah, the, you can use it, the Storm On Manual actually gives you.
Soil texture analysis?
Yeah.
How did you figure out just like soil type of the park rate would be?
Um, so, it's like, it's like.
Because Terracan actually gave you an infiltration hydraulic activity, which is a tenth of what you guys used for the infiltration rate for the recharge rate.
What did, what did Terracan?
So they gave you a three times tenth of the minus fifth inches per second, which translates to .09 inches per hour, as opposed to .52.
Does it say what depth they did that at?
Two and a half feet.
Yeah, so we're higher than that. So we're in a different strata than them.
Relative to existing grade?
Right, if they took it at two and a half feet, that's two and a half feet below grade, so that's by the water table, almost.
So where did you guys grab your number from?
Where our elevation we had existing grade.
Is there any information in here, start with?
No, because we, we used it off of the soil, the hydraulic soil group that is provided by the manual.
So you're talking about the NRCS soil maps?
Yes, we're hydraulic soil B, but we used a more conservative number because B was a lot higher. So I think we used the Cs conservative, which the review engineer said I should do, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Because C should be .17 inches per hour, right? If you're using the wrong number?
But is there?
For the raws rates?
Is that?
Can you show me where you got the number from?
I don't have the, I don't have the manual in front of me, but, um, this, this is, I, I discussed it with him, and this is definitely what he told me to use for that soil group, so. I.
Okay. He being?
I'm reading.
Because the bottom of the basin isn't that far from existing grade back there, is it?
It's like, yeah, it's like a half a feet higher, around there.
And if you went two feet down, wouldn't that?
It's three, it's about three feet in that area, yeah.
Just seems like it might not recharge here, because the NRCS soil maps are supposed to be for your surface runoff, right, to determine how much runoff you're getting at the surface level based on generic information that the. To determine how much runoff you're getting at the surface level based on generic information that the USDA takes in as opposed to.
That's for the curve, that's right.
Yeah, as opposed to the site specifically charged.
Well, the, the soil B, well, i- it is, yes, the hydraulic soil group is, is the surface, but I think that goes to a certain depth, but it's, it's definitely, um, I definitely used Devol's number for it, so, for whatever soil that was. I mean, that's what he, he told me to do, um.
And you guys didn't do a textural analysis or anything for that? You didn't do a USDA textural analysis to classify it?
No.
Okay. Have you been to conservation already?
We have, yeah.
And they gave you a?
Well, they, they, yeah, we, we, um, they, they're keeping it open because you guys told them to. Um, but yeah, they had no problem with our, with our design. And that was before I even upgraded it, so.
Voice comes.
It's like a fire outside.
Okay, so we'll open this for discussion, I, I know you, you're from the bank?
I am from the bank.
Okay, do you have any discussion about what we're doing here?
I mean, I really.
You're the neighbor?
I'm not a subject matter expert here. I don't know of any, I've only been with the bank for two years. I kinda asked around and we haven't had any issues as far as drainage that I'm, that I've heard of or unaware of, um, unlike my neighbors here. But, um, you know, I, I really have to, I guess bring all this information back to my CEO. I've been in touch with the engineer who's done some, some cleanup for us. Webby Engineering, so he was familiar with the site and said he's done some. Um, I think he said every three years he goes out to maintain, just check the area. Uh, we also had a landscaper, Mark Owens, who had, uh, done some cleanup for us a couple of times, I haven't been able to get in touch with him, but I'm, I'm gonna pull some markets to see what we've been doing to maintain it. So I believe that was in agreement when we first got the permitting. But, uh, as far as what I think of all the plans, cause I really can't speak to the technical terms of it.
All right, and then, um, I, I think you were requested to come here tonight and that actually has an issue to do with the drainage that you have on your property of which, um, the conservation met us out there tonight and referred back that, you know, they've reached out numerous times and said that there's been no response and no cleanup of the, uh, detention area out there. It's all overgrown, I don't know if you've taken a look at it or not. Uh, there is a maintenance program that's supposed to be followed and we do have that in the folder. Do you have that, Terry?
The original.
So all they have, the letter in there, who's gonna do the?
Oh, I gave them, I think she had copied that and. Uh, they've worked out of who they've reached out to.
Okay.
Uh, no, I think she's asking if.
Yeah.
If the conservation knows who they were in contact with.
Um, he didn't say, he said that they've reached out to the bank. So, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for a conservation, but, um, I do know that they, he, he said that they're reaching out and if they don't get any response, they're gonna start to find the bank. But there is supposed to be maintenance being done of it and I can tell you that it's overgrown. Nobody's trimmed any, there getting be trees out there now, not bushes, and that's all supposed to be cleaned up. So, uh, if you wanna reach out to the engineer and, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the folder on the project or not, but there is a schedule of maintenance for all the drainage easements and that was all included in the permitting way back when we did it.
So the, the CEO who was there at the time was retired. Actually, most of the people that were probably involved in this are, no longer work there. Like I said, I asked around, couldn't find much, um, even documents, they must be in archive. I, I wasn't able to pull out the originals, I mean, this was just as of yesterday, so I didn't have a lot of time.
Okay.
But I would appreciate anything, any copies that you might have handy.
Yes, the big question is, are you guys open to just maintaining that area back there? Just clearing out whatever vegetation is overgrown and just bringing it back to where it was supposed to be?
Yeah.
If that's just the basic ask.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would find it hard to believe that we've been ignoring any letters from the conservation committee.
Would the maintenance program be in that?
Usually it would all be in one big packet, but it didn't want to be.
This is all I have for the project, so. I'll have the. We're also talking about, we felt that it required as much stuff then as we do now.
I mean, what I would, what I would do is suggest that you also reach out to conservation. I'm not sure what days they're in.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, nine to two.
Cause the chairman of the conservation was out there tonight and then they only meet.
First and third, two, second and, sorry, second and fourth Tuesdays at 7:00 PM. And I can give you the phone number, it's 781-293-1736. And I can certainly take a copy of this whole folder and get it to you next week. Just so you have what we have, which.
It's probably more than what I have people find.
Maybe if you could contact, uh, that Packer S. Borden and Associates?
Yep, I just, I just saw that, so one of the branch managers actually was the one that dug up Webby's card and then there was, um, A. Vazella and Sons contracted sewer water lines, drain layers.
Who was it? Who was her name?
A. Vazella and Sons, uh, Brockton.
They were the ones who did the work?
Um, she said that she found his card with, uh, Webby's card, so she thought it was probably connected. Um, I have not spoken to them, but I, I'll try them and then I'll try this Arthur Borden as well.
Okay.
But Webby was gonna pull out his, he was gonna check the file to see when he's been out.
He only mentioned that one, he didn't even give me an exact date, he only mentioned 2015, that he had a report of some sort, but he didn't get back to me with it. He didn't mention he had the date of, of, 2015.
So that can be that?
Okay. All right, is there any other things? Questions? If I could, I would like to see if we could get this, um, carried over for another meeting, which would give us time to fill the files from the town. Cause I'd really like to try to get this thing squared away as far as the drainage goes.
With their property?
Yeah, on the street for the 1-6.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And also, if you could clarify, uh, Carlos knows about that stuff better than I do. I've just never seen a park drainage rate pulled off of a soil that. So if you could explain that to me?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'll, honestly, like, um, it, it was one of the first times that I've seen it too. Yeah, but yeah, apparently that's the, the, one of the standards for the stormwater and, and that's what I spoke with, um, Pat Ryan about.
So you can't agree if you actually do a classification with the USDA textural analysis when you send it to a lab and they spit out what the classification is for the actual elevation where you're doing recharge? Even if a water 0.09, it'd probably be better than a 72 hours anyway. So it's probably not that big of a deal, but if you could just look into that, I think that would be.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sure looking for that.
What do you want me to talk to?
Uh, just the infiltration rate.
Number, yeah.
Yeah, other than now, I don't think there's any design issues that we need to look at. I think we just need to clarify what's going on out on the street.
Okay. Uh, so when's the next?
Would you be comfortable doing an extension? Because I think.
Yeah, what's involved, what's involved in that?
We just have to ask for an extension, cause we're gonna be beyond our 45 days to act upon.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we was gonna say no.
This is basically a statement, it's a letter of mutual agreement for X amount of days. You would sign it, we would vote and sign it.
Did conservation have any material comments or questions as you go through their process?
Um, no, they, I mean, what they said, I mean, they looked at the, the vicinity of the, uh, our work to the wetlands and they had no problem with it because, um, really they consider this manmade wetlands. They would, you know, it was, it's done for, it was done by, like, this development and, and this, um, this drainage and, yeah, they, they had no. And like you guys said, it was, this was originally farmed, like you had a farm out there and now it's wetlands, you know?
Now it's wetlands.
Because of the, the constant drainage from the town all over the place and, so they had no problem with the vicinity and that was their biggest probably thought, so.
Down here in the bank?
Yeah.
Okay. So if that's mutual with you?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do we have next?
Next move would be the fourth.
April 4th.
So. We'll continue the hearing until April 4th? And do we want to set a time?
Uh.
Do we got another?
I, I put someone else in front of this because it's gonna be easy, so I would say 6:45.
Oh, the third one should be easy though, eh?
Oh, no, once we get ramped up, you know?
6:45?
Six forty-five. All right. All right, so what do we all put on this for a date? April 4th or we want, we need a decision for the time, right?
We, it's easier to do it by 30 days, 60 days, just do an extension. So we don't have to keep doing extensions, if we push it out for a certain amount of time, then we don't have to do one of these every time we come in, so.
30 days, fine. That gives us two meetings.
Sure.
I think I put three.
Scratch it to 60 days, cause that's what I put.
Oh, yeah. What do I say? This way?
Yep.
Basically, that would bring us to April 23rd. Welcome. The 45 days is actually March 25th, so I think if we do a 30-day extension from that date, I think we can do it that way.
Okay.
Which would bring it to April 24th, which would give us two more meetings.
Should we need to?
Should we need.
Should we need. Okay, so then I need a motion.
Make a motion to extend for.
30 days.
30 days. That's it.
Close, condition number 19, SPR dash 03. So a motion to accept a mutual agreement to extend for second.
A second.
All is a favor.
Aye.
All right.
And we'd certainly invite you to come back if you have some information for us.
And if you, uh, need something, feel free to call.
And I'll try and get some copies here for you and contact you sometime on.
If we can get things resolved.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you had a card too, because I'm sure, you know, maybe my client can even help, so.
Or a.
Right, that's not other, I could, no.
Oh, I actually don't have any.
Actually, on your, on the sign sheet, we can just give you your, like, the contact number, phone number. Does Brad Brennan have a new copy of this?
Yes.
He does, okay.
Yeah, he actually, um, we went back and forth on a couple things and he said this is what we sent, so that's what I sent you, that's it.
All right, and we have a moment?
The old.
Do we have a motion to?
Yeah, that motion.
Can you? Motion to continue the public hearing on April 4th and resume the regular scheduled Halifax Planning Board meeting?
To a time at six.
Forty-five.
Forty-five on April 4th. Have a motion as a second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Do you wanna give me those stuff up there? No, I'm done. Well, if you wanna take a sip.
The next ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Form A.
Got the form on?
This is mutual.
Here's a motion to pay a bill to the Compton Halifax.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the public hearing.
Thank you guys for coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a motion to pay the bill, as a second.
Pay the bill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That one was actually a redo because, um, the Express newspaper did not put the second notice in for RG Onomoto, so we have to start over.
So when's his, so, yeah, so.
His hearing will be April 4th instead of tonight, it got pushed for weeks.
So this is for us? And you think we'll be down to five minutes?
I give you 10.
Can't forget your own time.
Yes, that's awesome.
What's he on, for 6:30?
6:35, I think.
Wow.
Um, okay, and then the form A. 395 Columbus Street, yep, I have it right behind me. And basically, the first one that we looked at a couple of weeks ago.
The strange?
Not really. The only thing they did was see how we have existing building to be raised.
Yep.
On the other one, it said existing building to be raised and to be raised. At this point, they wanna keep these two, which...
They're good, right?
We can, um... And basically, what we can do is approve the Form A, but it now creates a zoning...
Violation.
Violation, because right now this is not raised. However, I did speak with Gordon early today. The gentleman came into the building department, giving some information as to permitting and what he needs to do to get that big chicken coop down. So we know that they are at least working on it. But for all intents purposes, we cannot deny it, but we can say it's a non-buildable lot because they're, it's creating a zoning violation. Because that building is, um...
A buildable lot?
A not, a non-buildable lot.
Didn't we propose some...
Because of the zoning violation.
Didn't we propose something to the guy, like, we'd sign it if he did, or are you saying we can't do that? We cannot do that. We have to approve it, right, if it meets the dimensional requirements, regardless of whether or not there's building on it.
But we can't write on the plan.
We can't write on the plan?
Yeah, like, as far as it being not a buildable lot, like, that's gotta be a note on...
We can make notes that we signed.
We can make a note, yeah, but I don't think we can write on the plan.
What are the requirements for a state lot frontage?
Well, you don't have the 30-foot here.
No, no, but for the front, that's the requirement.
Right.
50. So it's got the 50 feet, it's got 50.01 feet front, so it is a buildable lot, just that existing building is nonhabitable.
It doesn't mean so...
That building cannot be occupied.
No. No, it's not just that it can't be occupied.
It can be there.
But it violates, we're signing a plan that now violates the same laws.
If it were a building to be habitable.
No, a building.
It's not habitable, it's gonna be...
Doesn't matter if it's habitable and not a building that's closer than 30 feet.
But that doesn't make it not a buildable lot. The lot is still buildable provided they tear that building down and put a different one somewhere else. Right?
So it, yeah, so we...
But we're signing a plan which is a violation.
Creates a zoning violation.
Except for the fact that they say that building's supposed to be raised, right? But it's not.
Supposed to be, not yet.
If you're selling that land, they don't raise it.
Yeah, but they also can't occupy it either.
Well, I...
Right?
It isn't an issue of occupying it. I mean, it's a storage building, how do you not, how do you tell them we can't use it? We can't.
Well, I think we can, right, we'd send noting violation notices and send all these other things. Piece of letter.
An existing building, you're gonna...
They're creating their own problem, right?
They are. Basically, we're just doing the planning board thing and signing the Form A and then the zoning enforcement officer will take it from there.
And the guidance we got from legal counsel was that...
Well, what happens is when you get a Form A plan in, if it meets the fact that it's only a lot, a way...
Has the frontage.
Has the frontage. Our zoning doesn't stop us from signing the Form A plan, we're just saying, yep, it doesn't have to go to subdivision control. So we just say it's, you know, approval not required in subdivision control, that's all.
Right.
But it doesn't create a buildable lot by doing that.
No.
And we're not creating a buildable lot, they're changing the lot lines here.
Correct. So we're not saying anything about the components of the existing buildings as it relates to zoning regulations.
What we're signing right now...
These are legal lots, yeah, these are lots.
Yeah.
Somebody could build on if they did it correctly.
Typically, what we would do these before was that this would say apostle.
Except for the fact that it is theoretically a buildable lot, should they build a building the right way. Right, they're saying they're gonna tear that building down. Who are we to argue whether or not they are or not?
A lot of people say a lot of things.
But to your point, we're signing a plan that says the lines that's drawn on this plan conform to the requirements that say we have to sign, right?
It does not require subdivision control, is what we're saying.
Yep. I would agree to that.
But it doesn't say that you can now build something on here.
Yeah, we are not authorizing them to do that.
Because you have a violation of zoning.
Correct. If they were to come back and wanted to build a building on there, they would have to go to the building department and get a permit showing that their proposed building fits within the dimensional requirements of this new lot that they created. All right, they would not have to come back to us, they would not have to go to conservation provided it's not within wetlands, they would just have to go to the building department and fit a building within...
The envelope.
Those areas. Right?
So do I have a motion to endorse the Form A plan for 395 Plum Street?
I will make a motion that we readily endorse this Form A plan for 395 Plum Street.
Is there a second? I don't see how we can, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you wanna just mention dated, drawn by, or anything like that?
Um, dated March 1st, 2019, drawn by Outback Engineer. Plan number OE 3095.
Assesses map, 73 lots, 1B, 15 and 15A. Book 48, 346, page 206. Still not much. Any questions? I'll show you later.
Not that long.
I'll show you later.
Not that long.
Do we have another copy of this, Kelly?
I'll get it.
Can you get the check?
Hey! Dude, the show's second, huh? That's it?
Where are your pen out?
Yeah.
Any of these we go, son?
There's basically three copies. One for the town clerk, one for us, one for the petitioner. Two MyLars, two... Sorry, one Mylar and two Lars. One, two, three.
Check.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Cool, can I get the check again? Oh, you were done with that?
Yeah, that is...
Well, you saw the check, that's why you wanted it back.
It's the interest, it's two weeks late.
You check the fees to see if the fees are right. Is that a new thing to check soil type in a...
Yeah, so if you don't do actual in situ dialogue connectivity, you can actually get the soil classification, get a USDA textural analysis.
No, that's like similar if you can't get a perk, right, and then you go to one of those soil analysis?
No, you're not supposed to use the perk rate from the septic test to be able to do, to correlate to an infiltration rate. You can assign it a classification where you send it to a lab to give you a SIP analysis back.
SIP analysis, yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
So you get the SIP analysis.
You have to do the SIP.
And it tells you what the classification is, based on that classification, you assign it an infiltration rate. But they do that, they just kinda said, ah, the map said it should be this regardless of where...
Yeah, all right, that's what I haven't seen, because I remember there was a guy in Duckspire who used to take loose, the only guy I knew that would do like the SIP analysis.
Yeah, and you just grab the soil and send it to a lab for, it's 180 bucks for the test as opposed to 500 bucks out in the field to do a falling head test or whatever you have to do. It's cheaper, it's easier, generally pretty close.
Yeah, I just never heard of, I took a soil type and used a number, I just, I didn't know if that was something I just didn't know of.
Yeah, yeah, but it's kind of wrong. Misapplication, because you're supposed to do it where you're actually recharging as opposed to three feet higher, where you might have nice kind of loamy sand where it just soaks right in.
Yeah.
But then you get this wetland that's three feet down and it's not going anywhere, so...
And the soils out there are not, uh...
Yeah, we already know.
Not very nice.
But if it is the 1.09 rate that they, they actually did infiltration testing, they just didn't use the number. And if you actually use the number that they tested, then it still de-waters in the right amount of time. But it might affect how their analysis works out, but probably not that much. Surprised the peer review didn't catch that.
Well, I thought you had a comment about that, they did have a discussion with them all, but...
Was it in these comment letters? It sounded like the peer review told them to use that rate for some reason.
Yeah, but I see what you're getting. I thought the same thing Gordon was thinking though, because if they had a conversation about it, that means it already got brought up, like, that didn't just randomly, oh, hey, I'm gonna be the review engineer here, let me give you a couple of hints, like, he must have called him with an issue for the conversation to come up. That's what I thought, we didn't get that side of it.
Yeah.
Like, why were you guys even talking about it or... Either way, because I can't think, the rate over there is very high.
Yeah, 0.52 is pretty good, it's like a good sandy material.
Is that what they use?
It's a version, I don't have the number for me, but it's probably like a loamy sand or something like that. Which probably is at the top, yeah.
It's very muddy.
Yeah, when you get down lower, it's kind of that mucky muddy stuff, which is, where they said it was 0.09 inches per hour, which is lower than a class C soil would be, so it's not good once you get that low. But even still, a small amount of area that they're recharging to it would meet that 72-hour drawdown. It seemed like it would get down in like 66 hours, but still, you know, 72.
So which rate were they using, they were using a slow rate?
They were using 0.52 for...
Which is the high rate.
Which is the higher rate to say how long it would take to draw down. They said it would draw down in 10 hours, in reality, it's probably closer to 65 hours. But the requirement is that you do it in 72, so it's probably still okay. But they used that 0.52 number in the actual report, where they figure out how quickly it's soaking in while it's flowing in. So in the actual analysis, they use the higher number. If it's something that's smaller, it probably wouldn't matter that much. It really wouldn't, probably. It might change it a little bit, but, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll find out when they have a response next week.
I was, well, I'm never a professional, I was like, oh, yeah, I did like what somebody told me, it's like, well, that doesn't... Who?
Do you have anything on the agenda still officially?
Well, like, the alder just said, you know, what happens when it, if it doesn't, if it does fail, then what happens?
Well, peer review reviewed it, you have a professional engineer that designed it.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, you know. It's like, I stinks to tell them no, but I don't see how there's any way to point a finger after. I mean, if there was a problem with the basin itself or something...
Well, the problem is there's no baseline to say this is what it was beforehand and this is what it is now, other than anecdotal information. So that's the problem.
And if it floods, it's not necessarily their fault. I'll go down to the highway department, see what they have for plans for the road. And I'll pull them up so we have those for the next one.
Yep.
Maybe I can bring them in here if we get a chance to take a look at them beforehand.
Driving here from the site, that's a long way to go uphill for the pipe to go. I'd be surprised if it goes all the way that way.
All the way out to where the...
Fire station. Yeah, where the fire station is.
Well, um, Dave said it's about 11 feet down in front of Dunkin' Donuts.
It could very well be.
I wouldn't think they'd have a problem getting that water to a basin over in front of Dunkin' Donuts if it's 11 feet down, though.
No, did they have problems doing that?
Well, I mean, they're saying the water's coming out over there.
It was in the street, right?
Well, I'm talking about, they're talking about the, the manhole in the street's 11 feet down to the pipe.
Why are they all flooded?
Yeah.
Really narrow question, right?
Well, I'm saying, if you've got a catch basin in front of that site, it's not that far to where Dunkin' Donuts is. If you've got 11-foot drop, you shouldn't have any problem getting rid of that water.
Yep. Yeah, I completely agree, right, so why is that catch basin flooded too?
Yeah. There's the volume inside. Yeah, but even, even the volume inside, if you've got 11-foot head on it...
It should be going out.
The something under the catch basin's four feet down, but the pipe's only two feet down from the top.
Yeah.
Going to a manhole.
It's not that far.
It's a 11-foot drop, huh?
Yeah.
It shouldn't be so shodgy and off the side.
Something fishy there.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else?
Is everything on the agenda?
Other than 8 minutes from the 7th, and I haven't finished the ones from last meeting yet. I'm still on yet, like, an hour, but it was two and a half hours.
So we're good, if everybody's good?
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.